We're having a call, so I'd like to get started if we may. First thing I'd like to do, if we could, is to stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance. In the name of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under our individual right to a duty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to recommend the Chairman of the Board's right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So just wanted to offer up a moment of silence for Bill DuPont, who passed away last week in the studio on Friday. And he was in the forefront of making sure that Webster had excellent emergency health services through his chairmanship for Harvard Health Systems and also through West VMS. If you could just honor him for a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to go through some housecleaning items, as far as being present up front here on the stage, we have our Town Clerk, Mr. Bob Craver, our Town Council, Mr. Bill Yewig, and myself, the Town Moderator, Caddables. To my left on the floor, we have the Finance Committee, directly in front of me, the School Committee, and to my right, your left, the Board of Selectment. Administrators are also here, including the Town Administrator and other administrators from the town. I ask when you address the meeting to please use the microphones in the aisles. When you address, please give your name and resident address. For the three boards in front of me, they each have their own mics, which can be used by the Chairman or his designated, her designated, to address the town, or the Finance, School Committee, or Board of Selectment recommendations. If any member has a personal recommendation, I would please ask to use the microphones in the aisle. We do have electronic voting here. Mr. Town Administrator, are we going to have a test run tonight for that?
We will. So, "Go Tigers." But it's the Tigers of LSU versus the Tigers of Clemson are playing the national championship game tonight, so give me your choice.
Press 1A for LSU, 2B for Clemson. Make sure your controller lights up green when you vote. Know that you can press that button as many times as you wish, but it's only going to record the last one you press. Everybody's working okay? You can post to the votes.
I agree.
There you go. Very good. And one more thing before we get started, just to remind everybody, if your cellphones are on, to please mute them so as not to interrupt the meeting tonight. With that, the Town Clerk has reported that there is a quorum present, and I'd like to open the town meeting. And with that, the Town Clerk will read one.
In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required and directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Webster, a four seven, who are qualified to vote in elections in town affairs to meet in Barlett High School auditorium, 52 Lake Blackway in St. Webster, on Monday, January 30, 2020.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the warrant. As I will do on formality votes like this, I will just ask for the call of the A's and N's. All in favor of dispensing with the reading of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed. Article one, I am going to recuse myself from Article one. I've been appointed a member of the School Building Committee, and therefore it would be inappropriate for me to hold a post here for this article. The Deputy Moderator is currently serving a term to finish out the School Committee term vacancy, so he's unavailable. So I'm going to put it out to the floor for a motion to nominate a Town Clerk, a Town Moderator for Article one.
Mr. Moderator, would I make a motion to appoint Andrew Jolder, who's the Secretary to the Board of Selectment, as a moderator for Article one?
Motion made and seconded for Mr. Jolder to be the acting moderator for Article one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a vote. Mr. Jolder.
Article one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the amount of $1 million for the purpose of paying costs of the Bartlett High School feasibility study.
Motion to dispense with the reading, seconded.
We have a motion in a second just to dispense with the reading of the article. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion on dispensing with the reading of the article, all those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to dispensing with the reading of the article, please say no. It is unanimous vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the articles presented on the screen.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to have Dave Hearn present a short presentation, as well as some other members of the School Committee and Administrator.
Good evening, folks. My name is Dave Hearn. I am the Chair of the School Committee. I am also the Chair of the recently formed Bartlett High School School Building Committee. As you will see in the upcoming presentation, we put together some information for you that will hopefully indicate why we believe that this should be something that we support as a community. Joining me this evening is Dr. Dan Dogan, who is our Superintendent of Schools, and Mrs. Mogi Colangelo, who is the School District Business Manager. At this time, I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to speak to you tonight about the feasibility fund. I'd like to thank you as a community for your ongoing support of our schools.
Can you speak both in the line?
Yes, I can. I just want to thank you for your ongoing support as a community. We're very fortunate to have the supports that we do in our schools. I would like to start by speaking a little bit about Bartlett. Bartlett was built in 1979, and tonight we're going to speak to you about the need for renovations. We have applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority five times, and last year, on the sixth time, we were accepted into the eligibility phase, which we are in now. The next phase is the feasibility phase, and we're here tonight to speak to you about what a feasibility phase is. A feasibility phase helps us figure out what our problems are with the building and helps us figure out what the solutions are. This study during the feasibility phase is conducted by building experts. They will work with us, and we're here tonight to ask the town to support the feasibility phase for $1 million. We have a short presentation to show you why we believe we need renovations at Bartlett High School. The opportunity with the School Building, Massachusetts School Building Authority Association enables us as a town to get reimbursed at a rate of 76.48%. The new rate will be set sometime in February. So this is an opportunity for us to upgrade our facilities and upgrade our educational programming for our students. I'd like to ask Mrs. Colangelo to speak a little bit more about some of the building maintenance repairs that are needed. Thank you, Dr. Dogan. I hope you're all comfortable. I've got about 50 or 60 slides to go through in a quick manner. I'm chafing, we only have a few. We've highlighted the few areas that we are struggling with throughout the building. I hope when you come in, you see that it looks like a nice, clean building, and you're probably wondering, "Why do we need to renovate the high school?" But what you don't see is behind the scenes, behind the shell of the building. In this picture, you can see we have an ongoing problem of leaking roofs. You can see the damages in the building on the left on the ceiling. On the right-hand side, you can see a lot of the door frames are rotting throughout the exterior of the building. That's one door, but you can see the air, we're just losing air. Leaves and debris come climbing around another door. The next slide is our HVAC system and boilers. I don't think these pictures do it justice. It's much prettier in person. When you walk into the boiler room, there is a lot of rot going on with all the pipes coming apart. As you know, we've come to the town this past meeting looking for new boilers. The first one has failed, so the first one you see in the picture is no longer operational. We're strictly using one boiler, so we're appreciating this warm weather, so our boilers aren't working as hard. We're using the first boiler for some parts to repair the second boiler. We're in, we've just recently, let's try to get it moving here. So we are looking to replace boilers. We're going to be fixing some of the plumbing in that area, but it's only going to replace, we're only going to get one boiler. We need six to actually keep this building, so that's going to be an ongoing cost. If you're interested in how we're going to fund $1 million, I'm going to turn that over to the Town Administrator, Mr. Willison. But as you can see, and those are just a few snapshots of what we're experiencing in the building. There are many more things. Yep, the pictures are posted on the website, there's a PowerPoint slide there. We can really look at what we're struggling with throughout the building. At the district school website, www.wester-schools.org. We had informational light here on Thursday where we presented a longer presentation. We didn't think you'd want to sit here for about an hour to go through that, so we just kind of condensed it, just to give you the important facts.
Thank you, Juanay. So, as you can see, we're asking for $1 million. The state reimburses a little over 76% of that, so our portion would be about $235,000. And that would be split up over seven years, and it will be covered in our operating budget. If the project, if the feasibility project comes out well, and the project to reconstruct the, or to renovate the high school is approved, we will roll that project into the larger one eventually. But the estimated cost for the, for this feasibility study is about $310 for $100,000 of your real estate value. So if your home is a $200,000 home, it would be $6.20 annually for seven years.
So, so what's going to happen if this doesn't pass? We're going to have to make these repairs and pay them at 100%. So the ongoing repairs that are going to be needed in the building, we're going to have to fund them at 100% of the cost. Looking at our capital lien, which I was just updating, we are looking just for your basic repairs, your roof, your windows, your doors, your HVAC and plumbing. We're seeing a lot of corrosion in the plumbing in the building. The pipes are just kind of melting away. Right now, it's estimated at $16.2 million, and I am certain that's an underestimate. Some of the architects that I've recently spoke with said a lot of those repairs are, you know, have increased over time. So we're looking at 16 plus just to repair what's needed, and we would have to front 100% of that cost if we don't get the project. So again, feasibility study really is just hiring somebody to come in and take a look at everything that's going on in the building. They're going to look at the needs of the building, what needs to be repaired, they're going to take a look at programming, and then once that's done, they're going to come back to us with recommendations. So we will come back to the town with a plan of what the building is going to need in the future. This is just the study to tell us what we need.
Certainly, Mr. Moderator, if there are any questions from the folks in the audience, we would be more than happy to mention those as a summary. As a taxpayer, I view this primarily as something that we should support for two reasons. One, I do believe it's very important that a community provide a safe and comfortable learning environment for their children. Secondly, as was reiterated by Mrs. Colangelo and Dr. Dogan, we're going to have to repair this building regardless. This building is 40 years old, and it's getting very, very tired. We already lost one boiler. One parent shared with me a text earlier, but it was very cold, that their son texted her that, "You know, Mom, I don't mind coming to school every day, but it's really hard to learn because it's only about 32 degrees in my classroom." Unfortunately, this year, we only have one boiler, so if that boiler goes down, there's no heat in this building until we can get it fixed. So again, if you have any questions, we would be more than happy to answer any question that you make. So the process, the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, has a very strict timeline that all communities have to follow. The step would be, if the feasibility study is approved this evening, we will go in front of the MSBA in February or April? In February. They have a board meeting in February. Assuming that the MSBA approves, which there's never been a feasibility study not approved by the MSBA, if the funding is approved through the local community, then we will start the process. And it is actually quite an extensive process. It will take approximately 15 to 18 months. After the approval by the MSBA, we have to hire an own project manager, we have to hire the architects, and it's quite an extensive process that we go through to identify what is the best option, both from an engineering standpoint, an educational standpoint, and a financial standpoint. And again, as Mrs. Colangelo mentioned, once that feasibility study is completed, we will then come before the town and present what is the final recommended option, hopefully for final approval to move forward with the project. For the feasibility study, probably in that ranges. And again, this is a process that is dictated by the MSBA. It's not something that we, you know, we can sit here and drag our feet and try to delay how long it's going to take. I was, I was actually a member of the Park Dab School Building Authority, and, sorry, School Building Committee, and was very surprised at how long it took, but in the end, as a taxpayer, I was very pleased that it actually took as long as it did. Because we wanted to make sure that as a community, we obviously were doing what was necessary, but also financially reasonable, so that we're spending tax dollars appropriately.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, we'll open up voting. This is a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of passing the article, press 1A. All those opposed to the article, press 2B. And voting is open. Right, we'll close voting. The article passes.
Okay, Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from sewer other charges $48.15 to the sewer unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices, or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, as a point of clarification, Articles two through 12, we actually approved at a town meeting in December of 2018. That meeting actually was posted a little bit too late, so it didn't meet the requirements. So we are actually voting to ratify the votes that were made that night. So for Article two, I move the town vote to ratify the vote of December 12, 2018 by approving the article directly.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Because this is a prior year charge, this will require a nine-tenths majority to pass. At this time, I'll ask everybody to vote, one, to approve the article, and vote two, to not approve the article. Time for voting has expired. We'll post the results. 123 in the affirmative, two in the negative. It's a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, we're on to Article three, and we have a motion to approve these Articles three through 11. Mr. Town Administrator?
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to dispense with the reading of the articles for Articles three through 11, as well as to ratify the votes in December 20, 2018 by approving the Articles three through 11 as printed in the town meeting guide after hearing the planning board report.
Motion made and seconded to dispense with the reading of Articles three through 11. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a vote.
So I'd like to, with Moderator's permission, invite someone from the planning board to share the planning board reports for any of the articles between the, uh...
I believe it's Articles six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Yeah, everybody has the reports from the planning board, and they will all go in front.
Planning board has approved all. Recommended...
One question, Bob, from three to 11. Was this meeting comfortable after that? Somebody here for the third?
Sure was.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion on the motion to approve Articles three through 11? As presented in the guide. And this is going to be a two-thirds vote, as some of the articles, if not most of them, require a two-thirds vote, so it will require a two-thirds vote to approve all these articles together. We will open up voting. Vote 1A to approve Articles three through 11. Vote 2B to denounce. Time for voting expired. We'll post the results. 113 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative. It's a vote. We are on to Article 12, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding the following new chapter 573 to the article. We have a motion to dispense with the reading of the article, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will dispense with the reading of the article. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, I vote that the town move to approve the article as printed in the town meeting guide.
We have a motion to approve as presented, and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, this was also approved at the December 2018 town meeting. At the time, there was a lot of discussion on it, so I pulled this one out from voting with the rest of the articles. But as proposed in the guide, is with the amendments that we made on that night back in November 2018.
Mr. Willison, I know we addressed a typo when we did that.
Yes, so in your town meeting guide, on page 23, there was one script error in section On that second line, it says that owners of land abutting such public way, it should actually be a private way. I will amend my motion to include that change from public to private.
Motion and second to approve is corrected. Any discussion? That section, Mr. Craver, was 573.3.2. Okay, we'll open up for voting. All those in favor of Article 12, vote 1A. Opposed, 2B. Time for voting has expired. We'll post the results. 98 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative. The article passes. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to allow the Board of Selectment to seek special legislation to allow the town undertake major repairs on private ways and excess betterments therefore is false. We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of the rest of Article 13. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion to dispense with the reading passes. Mr. Town Administrator?
I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article 13 as presented. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, real brief explanation. So this article will allow us to go to the state to have Article 12 officially approved. In that, we are calling certain activities like resurfacing roads as temporary repairs. Obviously, resurfacing a road is kind of a stretch, call it a temporary repair, but we're allowing, we're asking the state to allow us to do that. Many other communities have done that, so we don't believe it's going to be an issue as we go to the state by decision.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll open up to a vote. All those in favor of Article 13, vote 1A. Opposed, 2B. Time for voting has expired. We'll post the results. 113, the affirmative, nine in the negative. Article 13 passes. Article 14. Article 14 was passed over at our October meeting. Any article that is passed over cannot be brought back at a special town meeting. Therefore, I need to declare Article 14 out of order. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen per MGL Chapter 44, Section 7. We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of Article 15. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion to dispense with the reading passes. Mr. Town Administrator?
I move that the town vote to pass over Article 15 for more information.
There's a motion and a second to pass over Article 15 for more information. Any discussion? Motion and a second. No. Bob Kirsch, 39 Elmer Road. I'd like to know why this is being passed over again. My understanding was, I had a discussion with Doug a few days ago, and I was assured that this was coming up at this meeting. We've been passed over, I don't know how many times. Why? Why again?
So, as the moderator said, Article 14 had to be passed over because it was ruled out of order because at the October meeting, it was passed over, and it can't be brought up until the annual town meeting. So I found out just an hour ago.
So when is the annual town meeting?
It's in May.
In May. Is this ever going to get done? Is this ever going to get done?
Uh, in May. Uh, there is no option at this point, except for waiting till May, uh, I'm not opposed to that.
I, I don't know what to say about this, this is, it's bordering on the ridiculous. I'd love to... Well, sir, uh, we do, we do have bylaws in town, and we have a bylaw, uh, and I'll just quote the number, two-five-three dash fourteen, it's pretty specific. That if an article is passed over, it cannot be brought back until a annual town meeting, and this is a special town meeting, so, uh, there was no choice for a co-op.
Uh, Article fourteen was not, Article fifteen, or the article to fund it was passed over for more information, the article specifically regarding paving of the road was passed over, not, not passed over for more information. So, we could act on Article fifteen, but it doesn't make any sense to you because it's funding a, uh, town meeting action that has not happened.
So, the annual town meeting in May, assuming that this is brought up again, and it can be voted on because it hasn't been. How much time after that meeting can we go to work?
Uh, so, assuming that Article twelve that we just passed, the bylaw, has been approved, and Article thirteen, the, uh, special legislation has been approved, there, it can happen right after the town meeting.
If it's a bylaw, I'd have to send the AG first.
Right, yeah, but we approved that tonight, so assuming that that was approved by May, it could happen right after.
Okay, so, when does it go to the AG?
So, uh, it passed tonight, so it will send into the Attorney General's office this week.
So by May, it should be approved?
They have to, they have to approve it within ninety-eight, and they use their law quicker than that.
Should, I would be mad by that, by May, ninety days old. Right now, we are voting on Article fifteen, and there is a motion to pass over Article fifteen for more information, and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll open up the voting. Vote one A to approve the motion to pass over for more information, vote two B, to... Not allowed to pass over for more information. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. Eighty-nine, the affirmative, twelve nineteen in the negative, the motion to pass over for more information passes. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to revoke acceptance of the civil service law, uh, CLC thirty-one, taken at the July sixth nineteen thirty-seven special town meeting. We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of Article sixteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion to dispense with the reading passes, Mr. Towne Minister.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the guide.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article sixteen as presented, any discussion?
Good evening. So, this has been actually been an idea that we've been kicking around for a few, several years, and we just actually, with the opportunity with the, uh, the last meeting contract negotiation of the town, we were able to come to an agreement. Um, obviously, Webster became the civil service in nineteen thirty-seven, and at that point in time, it served its purpose, but a lot of the benefits that we get from civil service now, we can cover on the collective bargaining agreement. So, a big reason for this is the hiring process, and I know that people say, well, if I, if I ace that civil service task, or if I, you know, top it, then, you know, I'm guaranteed a spot, and the process is still going to be what it is. The issue that we come into the civil service is, they give a test every two years, usually it's in April, and we don't get scores until September. So from that list, we get a series of candidates, of, uh, a pool of candidates. A lot of times, we exhaust that in that list, and then it goes on to the state list, and that just takes forever, because people come in, assign a list, they, they take out background checks, but they take out the background packets. We spend hours and hours and hours with background investigations, and it just, we have the vacancies that still exist, and we get people that aren't necessarily looking to stay in Webster long term. Case in point, we, we hired, uh, Officer Michael Leary off the state list, the lateral to Millbury just was passed to him. My goal is to get people that want to work in Webster. This would allow us to do that, we would have a test specific for people that want to work here in Webster in the state, you know, Webster. This would also allow us to take lateral transfers, right now, we can take lateral transfers only from other civil service departments. There's only a hundred and forty-two civil service departments in, in the state, there's three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, not to mention colleges, universities. If an officer has a full-time police academy, whether it be in Massachusetts or out of state, they can get that academy if they're out of state certified from the MPTC, and they're eligible for a lateral transfer. We actually had that happen with one of the officers that we trained, that we hired, he had a Ramalan academy, so we were fortunate that we hired him, and his academy transferred, so we didn't have to pay for him to be in the academy, pay for his expenses. Met with the department, they were in favor, I have the unique president's here as well to show his support, um, this has been a long time coming. I feel that, you know, it's my responsibility to provide the citizens of Webster the most professional police force that I can, and one of the ways to do so is to hire people that want to be here long-term. Um, I've had people rejudge me just this past weekend, an officer that wants to come here and wants to talk about full-time response, uh, full-time opportunities, but he's not a civil service officer, so unfortunately, I came, I talked to him, but I couldn't hire him long-term. This is a long process, tonight's just the first step, then we have to go to legislation, eventually it's signed off by the governor, so there's, you know, several months ahead, so it's not something that's going to take any effect tonight. But, uh, I think this is the best way for our department to move forward, and I would ask that you put this, this out of the way. If anybody has any questions?
Any other discussion?
George Burton, Union Point, I have a question, with the civil service, there's veterans preference, and veterans are given preference as they, uh, do after serving their country.
Right.
Would they still have that under this? No, hey, wouldn't, would they?
They wouldn't have preference per se, no, there would be...
All right, I urge you vote no, and respect veterans for their service, keep the test fair, as far, as far as, uh, officers wanting to come to Webster, they don't have to live in Webster, and most of them don't. So it's not going to help us at all there, and I, civil service is there for a reason, everybody can take the test, it's open, you get vet, veterans a preference that they earned, and it's their right, and I urge everyone to vote no on this.
So the veterans' preference, we wouldn't give points per se for, for veterans, for being a veteran, I'm a veteran, but I also, it would be considered as part of the overall package when they present themselves, their background package.
Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, sir, could you please just state your name and address, thank you.
Miguel Yavis, thirty-one Hill Street.
Thank you.
So, on that same note, is there a way to discuss it between the union and yourself, so that there is a way, so that the veterans, if you're looking to hire from the town, or people dedicated to this town? There should always be a way for that veterans, disabled veterans, get a preference, they've already given to the country, now you want them, you know, you're looking for people to give to the town? They've got that in their blood, in their background, as, as you say, there should be something written in there that, you know what, will give that, and not just an assumption in terms of the packet, as you saw, because once you leave, there's another, and once they leave, there's another, and then, Lord knows, if it's not written, it ain't there, all right? And, uh, you know, I've, I've been on the job, I know how it is, and on the beat, how it was in the civil service and the protection, but I also know that when you have the dedication of people in the military that are going in, it's, you know, it's a benefit. But that protection, that, that, for people to actually get extra, that should be in, that should be written in there, it should not be assumed, it should not be, uh, it should definitely be something more concrete than just verbal.
So the hiring process is actually something that's agreed upon between the union and, and administration, and that's something that we're working out and continuously developing. Um, you bring up some very valid points, and absolutely, um, you know, veterans, I was, I served in the Marines from ninety-two to ninety-eight in, in the reserves, I unfortunately didn't qualify for veterans' preference. So I, I lost out to a lot of people that did get veterans' preference, but, being said, I think you bring up some valid points, and we're just continuing to tweak our process, um, so it's still, again, this is a process that will be agreed upon between the administration and the unions. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Leonard Javery, uh, Fifth Street, is this going to give, uh, is this going to give you more power if, if you take civil service away, regardless of not, you're a veteran?
Me, I don't know much.
Oh, are you going to just, are you going to bypass a lot of the rights under the civil service rules right now? Are you going to be able to have the ability to just kick somebody right out the door?
No, there's just cause, and that's in the contract, and there's been case law on that, absolutely not.
But it's going to make it a, it's going to make the whole process a lot easier without the civil service protections, right?
No, because it still goes to, it would still go to an arbitration, which a lot of the disciplinary actions in civil service are now going to arbitration, so it's the same process, and that's all written in the contract, so they still would have the same rights.
Myself too, I'm, I'm a veteran, I also, uh, worked in both non-civil service and civil service, and I think it's going to be a big mistake if, if the town gets rid of the civil service, that's all I got to say.
Again, the, the, the just cause is outlined in there, it's in the collective bargaining agreement, the disciplinary, the termination procedures are all in their, in their collective bargaining agreement, but again, you know, the union's not going to just agree to this and, and give me, give Mike Shaw all, you know, the almighty power to kick people out. It just is, they wouldn't let it fly, and I wouldn't do that, because it's not...
Any other discussion? Okay, we're ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article sixteen as presented, please press one A, all those opposed, please, please press two B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. Ninety-three, vapor, thirty-five, opposed, the article is passed. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a subsufficient of the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices, or take any action there.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from public building expenses, electricity, police, uh, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and one cent to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices.
We have a motion and a second?
Yeah, the, the amount in the guide has been updated.
Any discussion? A prior year's bill is going to require a nine-tenths vote to approve. We'll open up the voting, all those in favor of Article seventeen, vote one A, all those opposed, two B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. Ninety-five percent in affirmative, one fourteen to six, the motion passes. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer fifty-eight thousand dollars from the town hall stabilization fund to the town hall improvement account, or take any action there.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
We have a motion and a second to approve the article as read, Mr. Towne Minister.
Uh, are there any questions? This, uh, real brief, uh, we see, we received a lease payment from the solar farm that's, uh, on the old landfill on Cutworth Road, that has been designated to go to town hall improvements, so we're taking it from that stabilization fund to the fund that we can actually spend it from. Uh, one of the things we will be spending on, on is a match to a grant we received from the state to do a study on town hall, to have an architect look at the most pressing matters that need to be replaced.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, put to a vote, all those in favor of Article eighteen, press one A, all those opposed, two B. This is, that's correct, thank you, uh, Mr. Craver, this is a two-thirds requirement to approve. Okay, time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. One sixteen in the affirmative or in the negative, ninety-seven percent, the motion passes. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C, in the interest of public safety and without further authority.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of the article, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion to dispense passes, Mr. Towne Minister.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Any discussion?
Uh, this will allow the town, the Board of Selectment to set the speed limit, reduce it from, uh, thirty to twenty-five miles per hour in the business district for quickly settled areas.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, ready to vote, all those in favor of Article nineteen? Vote one A, all those opposed, two B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. Eighty-four in the affirmative, thirty-nine in the negative, the article is approved. We have a motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Please turn in your wickers, please, on your way out, it's seven o'clock, so I'd like to get started if we may. Uh, first thing I'd like to do, if we could, is, uh, to stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地间， just as for all. At this time, I'd like to recommend the Chairman of the boards.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I just wanted to, um, offer a moment of silence for a man before Bill McLeod passed the last week in the school on Friday, uh, Billy McLeod. And he was in the forefront of making sure that Webster had excellent emergency health services through his chairmanship for public health systems, and also through Webster EMS, so if you could just honor him in a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, this is pleasure. Just to go through some, uh, housecleaning items, uh, as far as being present up front here on the stage, we have our town clerk, Mr. Bob Craver, our town council, Mr. Bill Ewig, and myself, the town moderator, Ted Ables. Uh, to my left on the floor, we have the finance committee, uh, directly in front of me, the school committee, and to my right, your left, the Board of Selectment. Administrators are also here, including the town administrator and other administrators from the town. I ask when you, uh, address the meeting, to please use the microphones in the aisles, uh, when you address, please give your name and resident address. For the three boards, uh, in front of me, they each have their own mics, which can be used by the chairman, or his designee, her designee. which can be used by the chairman or his designee, her designee, uh, to address the town or, uh, the finance, school committee or Board of Selectmen recommendations. If any member has a personal recommendation, I would please ask to use the microphones in the aisle. We do have, uh, electronic voting here. Mr. Town Administrator, are we gonna have a test run tonight for that?
We will. Uh, so, go Tigers. Uh, but it's, the Tigers of LSU versus the Tigers of Clemson are playing the national championship game tonight, so give me your choice.
Press one, one A. For LSU, ready, two, two B for Clemson. Make sure your, uh, controller lights up green when you vote. Know that you can press that button as many times as you wish, but it's only gonna record the last one you press. Everybody's working okay? We can post the results.
I agree.
There you go. Very good. And one more thing before we get started, just to remind everybody, if your cell phones are fine, please mute them so as not to interrupt the meeting tonight. With that, the town clerk has reported that there is a quorum present. And I'd like to open the town meeting. And with that, the town clerk will read one.
In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required and directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Webster, a four seven, for qualified to vote in elections in town affairs to meet in Barlett High School auditorium, fifty-two Lake Blackway, in St. Webster, on Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Thank you. Motion made in second to dispense with the reading of the warrant. As I will do on, uh, formality votes like this, I will just ask for the call of the A's and names. All in favor of dispensing with the reading of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed. Article one, I am going to recuse myself from Article one. I've been appointed a member of the school building committee and therefore it would be inappropriate for me to hold a post here, uh, for this article. The deputy moderator is currently serving a term, uh, to finish out the school committee, a term vacancy. So he's unavailable. So I'm gonna put, uh, it out to the floor for a motion, uh, to nominate a town clerk, a town moderator for Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Andrew Jolder, who's the secretary to the Board of Selectmen, as the moderator for Article one.
Motion made in second for Mr. Jolder to be the acting moderator for Article one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a vote. Mr. Jolder.
Article one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the amount of one million dollars for the purpose of paying costs of the Bartlett High School feasibility study.
Motion to dispense with the reading, definitely.
We have a motion in a second just to dispense with the reading of the article. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion on dispensing with the reading of the article, all those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to dispensing with the reading of the article, please say no. It is a unanimous vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented on the screen.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to have Dave Hearn, uh, present a short presentation as well as, uh, some other members of the school committee and administrators.
Good evening, folks. My name is Dave Hearn. I am the chair of the school committee. I am also the chair of the recently formed Bartlett High School School Building Committee. As you will see in the upcoming presentation, uh, we put together some information for you that will hopefully indicate why we believe that this should be something that we support as a community. Joining me this evening is Dr. Dan Gogan, who is our superintendent of schools, and Mrs. Mogi Ferangeli, who is the school district business manager. At this time, I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to speak to you tonight about the feasibility fund. I'd like to thank you, um, as a community, for your ongoing support of our schools. Yes, I can. I just wanna thank you for your ongoing support as a community. We're very fortunate to have, um, the supports that we do in our schools. I would like to start by speaking a little bit about, um, Bartlett. Bartlett was built in nineteen seventy-nine. And tonight, we're gonna speak to you about, um, the need for renovations. We have applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority five times. And last year, on the sixth time, we were accepted into the eligibility phase, which we are in now. The next phase is the feasibility phase. And we're here tonight to speak to you about what a feasibility phase is. A feasibility phase helps us figure out what our problems are with the building and helps us figure out what the solutions are. This study during the feasibility phase is conducted by building experts. They will work with us and we're here tonight to ask the town to support the feasibility phase for one million dollars. We have a short presentation to show you why we believe we need, um, renovations at Bartlett High School. The opportunity with the school building, Massachusetts School Building Authority Association, enables us as a town to get reimbursed at a rate of seventy-six point four eight percent. The new rate will be set sometime in February. So this is an opportunity for us to upgrade our facilities and upgrade our educational programming for our students. I'd like to ask Mrs. Ferangeli to speak a little bit more about some of the building, um, maintenance repairs that are needed.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. I hope you're all comfortable. I've got about fifty or sixty slides to go through, um, in quick manner. I'm just, we only have a few. We've highlighted some areas, uh, that we're struggling with throughout the building. Um, I hope when you come in, you see that it looks like a nice clean building and you're probably wondering, why do we need to renovate the high school? But what you don't see is behind, behind the scenes, behind the shell of the building. In this picture, you can see we have, um, an ongoing problem of leaking roofs. You can see the damages in the building on the left on the ceiling. On the right-hand side, you can see a lot of the door frames are rotting throughout the exterior of the building. Um, that's one door. But you can see the air, we're just losing air. Leaves and debris come flying around other doors. The next slide, uh, is our HVAC system and boilers. I don't think these pictures, uh, do it justice. It's much prettier in person. Um, when you walk into the boiler room, uh, there is a lot of rot going on with, uh, all the pipes, um, coming apart. Our, as you know, we've come to the town this past meeting, uh, looking for new boilers. The first one has failed. So the first one you see in the picture is no longer operational. Um, we're strictly using one boiler. So we're appreciating this warm weather, um, so our boilers aren't working as hard. We're using the first boiler for some parts to repair the second boiler. Um, we're in, we've just recently, let's try to get you going ahead here. Um, so we are looking to replace boilers. Uh, we're gonna be, um, fixing some of the plumbing in that area, but it's only gonna replace, we're only gonna get one boiler. We need six to actually heat this building. So that's gonna be an ongoing cost. If you're interested in how we're gonna fund a million dollars, I'm gonna turn that over to the town administrator, uh, Mr. Willison. But as you can see, and those are just a few snapshots of what we're experiencing in the building. Um, there are many more things. Uh, yep, the pictures are posted on the website. There's a PowerPoint slide there. Um, we can really look at what we're struggling with throughout the building. At the district school website, www.wester-schools.org. We had informational night here on Thursday where we presented a longer presentation. Uh, we didn't think you'd wanna sit here for about an hour to go through that. So we just kinda condensed it and just to give you the important facts.
Thank you, one eighty. So, uh, as you can see, we're asking for a million dollars. Uh, the state reimburses a little over seventy-six percent of that, so our portion would be about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and that will be split up over seven years and it will be covered in our operating budget. Uh, if the project, uh, if the feasibility project is, comes out well and the project to reconstruct the, or to renovate the high school is approved, we will roll that project into the larger one eventually. Um, but the estimated cost for the three, for this feasibility study is about three hundred and ten dollars for a hundred thousand dollars of your, uh, real estate value. So if your home is a two hundred thousand dollar home, it would be six dollars and twenty cents in, for seven years.
So, so what's gonna happen if this doesn't pass? We're gonna have to make these repairs and pay them at a hundred percent. So the ongoing repairs that are gonna be needed in the building, we're gonna have to fund them at a hundred percent of the cost. Looking at our capital lien, uh, which I was just updating, we are looking just for your basic repairs, your roof, your windows, your doors, your HVAC and plumbing. We're seeing a lot of corrosion in the plumbing in the building. The pipes are just kinda melting away. Uh, right now, it's estimated at sixteen point two million and I am certain that's an underestimate. Um, some of the architects that I've recently spoke with, um, said a lot of those repairs are, you know, have increased over time. So we're looking at sixteen plus just to repair what's needed and we would have to front a hundred of percent of that cost if we don't, um, get the project. So again, uh, the feasibility study really is just hiring somebody to come in and take a look at everything that's going on in the building. They're gonna look at the needs of the building, what needs to be repaired. They're gonna take a look at programming. And then, once that's done, they're gonna come back to us with recommendations. So we will come back to the town with a plan of what the building is gonna need in the future. Um, this is just the study to tell us what we need.
Certainly, Mr. Moderator, if there are any questions from the folks in the audience, we would be more than happy to mention those. As a summary, as a taxpayer, I view this primarily as something that we should support for two reasons. One, I do believe it's very important that a community provide a safe and comfortable learning environment for their children. Secondly, as was reiterated by Mrs. Ferangeli and Dr. Gogan, we're gonna have to repair this building regardless. This building is forty years old and it's getting very, very tired. We already lost one boiler. Uh, one parent shared with me a text earlier when it was very cold that their son texted her that, you know, mom, I don't mind coming to school every day, but it's really hard to learn because it's only about thirty-two degrees in my classroom. Unfortunately, this year, we only have one boiler. So if that boiler goes down, there's no heat in this building, uh, until we can get it fixed. Um, so again, if you have any questions, we would be more than happy to answer any question that you might have. So the process, the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, has a very strict timeline that all communities have to follow. The step would be, if the feasibility study is approved this evening, we will go in front of the MSBA in February or April? In February, they have a board meeting in February. Assuming that the MSBA approves, which there's never been a feasibility, feasibility study not approved by the MSBA, if the funding is approved through the local community, then we will start the process. And it is actually quite an extensive process. I, it will take approximately fifteen to eighteen months. After the approval by the MSBA, we have to hire a, an own project manager. We have to hire the architects. It's quite an extensive process that we go through to identify what is the best option, both from an engineering standpoint, an educational standpoint, and a financial standpoint. And again, as Mrs. Ferangeli mentioned, once that feasibility study is completed, we will then come before the town and present what is the final recommended option, hopefully for final approval to move forward with the project. For the feasibility study? Probably in that ranges. And again, this is a process that is dictated by the MSBA. Um, it's not something that we did, you know, we're gonna sit here and drag our feet and try to delay how long it's gonna take. Um, I was, I was actually a, a member of the Park DAB School Building Authority and, uh, sorry, School Building Committee and was very surprised at how long it took, but in the end, as a taxpayer, I was very pleased that it actually took as long as it did. Because we wanted to make sure that in the community, we obviously were doing what was necessary, but also financially reasonable so that we're spending tax dollars appropriately.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, um, we'll open up voting. This is a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of passing the article, press one A. All those opposed to the article, press two B. And voting is open. Right, we'll close voting. The article passes.
Okay, Article two. To see if the town will vote to transfer from sewer other charges, forty-eight dollars and fifteen cents to the sewer unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereon.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, as a point of clarification, Articles two through twelve, we actually approved that at a town meeting in December of two thousand eighteen. That meeting actually, uh, was posted a little bit too late, so it didn't meet the requirements. So we are actually voting to ratify the votes that were made that night. So for Article two, I move that the town vote to ratify the vote of December twelfth, two thousand eighteen by approving the article as written.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Because this is a prior year charge, uh, this will require a nine-tenths majority to pass. At this time, I will ask everybody to, uh, vote one, to approve the article, and vote two, to not approve the article. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. One twenty-three in the affirmative, two in the negative. It's a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Motion's, uh, yeah, we're onto Article three and we have a motion, uh, to approve these Articles three through eleven. Mr. Town Administrator?
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to dispense with the reading of the articles for Articles three through eleven as well as to ratify the votes in December twentieth, two thousand eighteen by approving the Articles three through eleven as printed in the town meeting guide after hearing the planning board report.
Motion made in second to dispense with the reading of Articles three through eleven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a vote.
So I'd like to, with Moderator's permission, invite someone from the planning board to, uh, share the planning board reports for any of the articles between the, uh...
I believe it's Articles six, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Yeah, everybody has the reports from the planning board and they're all fully in front.
Planning board has approved all of them, recommended.
One question, bar, was three to eleven, was this meeting properly at the back since we're here for the third?
Sure was. Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Any discussion on the motion to approve Articles Three through eleven? As presented in the guide? And this is going to be a two-thirds vote, as some of the articles, if not most of them, require a two-thirds vote, so it will require a two-thirds vote to approve all these articles together. We will open up voting. Vote 1A, to approve Articles Three through eleven, vote two B, to deny. Time for voting expired, we'll post the results. One-thirteen in the affirmative, eleven in the negative, it's a vote. We are on to Article Twelve. To see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding the following new Chapter Five, Seventy-three. We have a motion to dispense with the reading of the article, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? We will dispense with the reading of the article.
Mr. Moderator, I vote that the town move to approve the article as printed in the town meeting guide.
We have a motion to approve as presented, and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, this was also approved at the December two thousand and eighteen town meeting. At the time, there was a lot of discussion on it, so I pulled this one out from voting with the rest of the articles. But as proposed in the guide, is with the amendments that we made on that night and back in November two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Wilson, I know we addressed a typo in the, you want to address that?
Yeah, so, um, in your town meeting guide, on page twenty-three, there was one script error in Section Five, Seventy-three, point three, point two. On that second line, it says that owners of land abiding such public way, it should actually be a private way. I will amend my motion to approve that change from public to private.
Motion and second to approve as corrected. Any discussion? That section, Mr. Craver, was five, seven, three, three, two. Okay, we'll open up for voting. All those in favor of Article Twelve, vote 1A, opposed, 2B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. Ninety-eight in the affirmative, eleven in the negative, the article passes. Article Thirteen. To see if the town will vote to allow the board of selectmen to seek special legislation to allow the town undertake major repairs on private ways and assess betterments therefore as follows. We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of the rest of Article Thirteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion to dispense with the reading passes. Mr. County Minister?
I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the board.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article Thirteen as presented. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, real brief explanation. So this article will allow us to go to the state to have Article Twelve officially approved, in that we are calling certain activities like resurfacing the roads as temporary repairs. Obviously, resurfacing the road is kind of a stretch, call it a temporary repair, but we're allowing, we're asking the state to allow us to do that. Many other communities have done that, so we don't believe it's going to be an issue as we go through the state legislature.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll open up to a vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen, vote 1A, opposed, 2B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. One-thirteen, the affirmative, nine in the negative. Article Thirteen passes. Article Fourteen. Article Fourteen was passed over at our October meeting. Any article that is passed over cannot be brought back at a special town meeting. Therefore, I need to declare Article Fourteen out of order. Article Fifteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen per MGL Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven. We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of Article Fifteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion to dispense with the reading passes. Mr. County Minister?
I move that the town vote to pass over Article Fifteen for more information.
There's a motion and a second to pass over Article Fifteen for more information. Any discussion? Motion and a second? No.
Bob Kirsch, thirty-nine Oak Road. I'd like to know why this is being passed over again. My understanding was, I had a discussion with Doug a few days ago, and I was assured that this was coming up at this meeting. We've been passed over, I don't know how many times. Why, why again?
So, as the moderator said, Article Fourteen had to be passed over because it was ruled out of order, because at the October meeting, it was passed over with, and it can't be brought up until the annual town meeting. So I, I found out just an hour ago.
So when is the annual town meeting?
It's in May.
In May? Is this ever going to get done?
In May. There is no option at this point, except for waiting till May. I have no politics for that.
I don't know what to say about this. This is, this is bordering on the ridiculous.
Well, sir, we do, we do have bylaws in town, and we have a bylaw, and I'll just quote the number, two-five-three-dash-fourteen. It's pretty specific, that if an article is passed over, it cannot be brought back until a annual town meeting. And this is a special town meeting, so there was no choice according to our.
Article Fourteen was not. Article Fifteen, or the article to fund it was passed over for more information. The article specifically regarding the paving of, of the road was passed over, not, not passed over for more information. So we could act on Article Fifteen, but it doesn't make any sense to you because it's funding a, a town meeting action that has not happened.
So, the annual town meeting in May, assuming that this is brought up again and it can be voted on because it hasn't been, how much time after that meeting can we go to work?
So, assuming that Article Twelve that we just passed, the bylaw, has been approved, and Article Thirteen, the special legislation, have been approved, there, it can happen right after the town meeting.
If it's a bylaw, I have to go to the AG first.
Right, yeah, but we approved that tonight, so assuming that that was approved by May, it could happen right.
So, when does it go to the AG?
So it passed tonight, so we'll send it to the Attorney General's Office this week.
So by May, should we approve?
They have to, they have to approve it within ninety-eight, and they use their law.
Should be by May, by May, ninety-eight.
Right now, we are voting on Article Fifteen, and there is a motion to pass over Article Fifteen for more information, and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll open up the voting. Vote 1A to approve the motion to pass over for more information, vote 2B, to... Not allowed to pass over for more information. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. Eighty-nine, the affirmative, twelve, nineteen in the negative, the motion to pass over for more information passes. Article Sixteen. To see if the town will vote to revoke acceptance of the civil service law, CLC Thirty-One, taken at the July sixth, nineteen thirty-seven special town meeting. We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of Article Sixteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion to dispense with the reading passes.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the guide.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article Sixteen as presented. Any discussion?
So this has been actually been an idea that we've been kicking around for a few, several years, and we just actually, with the opportunity with the, the last meeting contract, the negotiation of the town, we have a common agreement. Obviously, Webster became the civil service in nineteen thirty-seven, and at that point in time, it served its purpose, but a lot of the benefits that we get from civil service now, we can cover on the collective bargaining agreement. So, a big reason for this is the hiring process. And I know that people say, well, if I, if I ace that civil service task, or if I, if I, you know, pop it, then, you know, I'm guaranteed a spot, and the process is still going to be what it is. The issue that we come into the civil service is, they give a test every ten years, usually it's in April, and we don't get scores until September. So from that list, we get a series of candidate pool, of a, a pool of candidates. A lot of times, we exhaust that, that list, and it goes on to the state list, and that just takes forever, because people come and they sign on this, they, they take out background checks, or they take out the background packets. We spend hours and hours and hours going back on the registrations, and it just, we have the vacancies that still exist, and we get people that aren't necessarily looking to stay in Webster long term. Case in point, we, we hired Officer Michael Leary off the state list, he lateral to Mill Bridges as past student. My goal is to get people that want to work in Webster. This would allow us to do that. We would have a test specific for people that want to work here in Webster and stay here in Webster. This would also allow us to take lateral transfers. Right now, we can take lateral transfers only from other civil service departments. There's only a hundred and forty-two civil service departments in, in the state. There's three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, not to mention colleges, universities. If an officer has a full-time police academy, whether it be in Massachusetts or out of state, they can get that academy if they're out of state, certified through the MPTC, and they're eligible for lateral transfer. We actually had that happen with one of the officers that we, that we hired. He had a Rhode Island academy, so we were fortunate that we hired him and his academy transfer, so we didn't have to pay for him to be in the academy and pay for his expenses. The members of the department, they were in favor. I have the union presidents here as well to show his support. This has been a long time coming. I feel that, you know, it's my responsibility to provide the citizens of Webster the most professional police force that I can, and one of the ways to do so is to hire people that want to be here long-term. I've had people reach out to me just this past weekend, an officer that wants to come here and wants to talk about full-time, uh, full-time opportunities, but he's not a civil service officer, so unfortunately, I came, I talked to him, but I couldn't hire him long-term. This is a long process, tonight's just the first step, then we have to go to legislation that eventually is signed off by the governor, so there's, you know, several months ahead, so it's not something that's going to take any effect tonight. But I think this is the best way for our department to move forward, and I would absolutely put this, this out of this. If anybody has any questions?
Any other discussion?
George, Richard, Union Point, I have a question. With the civil service, there's veterans' preference, and veterans are given preference as they do after serving their country.
Correct.
Would they still have that under this? No, they wouldn't, would they?
They wouldn't have preference per se, no, they wouldn't be.
All right, I urge you vote no, and respect veterans for their service, keep the test there. As far as, as far as officers wanting to come to Webster, they don't have to live in Webster, and most of them don't. So it's not going to help us at all there. And I, civil service is there for a reason. Everybody can take the test, it's open, you get vet, veterans a preference that they earned, and it's their right. And I urge everyone to vote no on this.
So the veterans' preference, we wouldn't give points per se for, for veterans for being a veteran? I'm a veteran, but I also, it would be considered as part of the overall package when they presented themselves, their background.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, sir, could you please just state your name and address?
Miguel Yavis, thirty-one, Tulsa. So, on that same note, is there a way to discuss between the union and yourself, so that there is a way, so that the veterans, if you're looking to hire from the town, are people dedicated to this town? There should always be a way for the, that veterans, disabled veterans, get a preference. They've already given to the country, now you want them, you know, you're looking for people who give to the town? They've got that in their blood, in their background, as, as you say. There should be something written in there that, you know what? Will give that, and not just an assumption in terms of a packet as yourself, because once you leave, there's another, and once they leave, there's another. And then, Lord knows, if it's not written, it ain't there, all right? And, you know, I've, I've been on the job, I know how it is, and on the beat, how it was in the civil service and the protection, but I also know that when you have the dedication of people in the military that are going in, it's, you know, it's a benefit. But that protection that, for people to actually get extra, that should be in, that should be really in there. It should not be assumed, it should not be, uh, it should definitely be something more concrete than just verbal.
So the hiring process is actually something that's agreed upon in the union and, and administration, and that's something that we're working out and continuously developing. You bring up some very valid points, and absolutely, you know, veterans, I was, I served in the Marines from ninety-two to ninety-eight in, in the reserves. I unfortunately didn't qualify for veterans' preference, so I, I lost out to a lot of people that did get veterans' preference, but being said, I think you bring up some valid points, and we're continuing to tweak our process. So it's still, again, this is a process that will be agreed upon between the administration and the unions. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Leonard Javery, Fifth Street. Is this going to give, is this going to give you more power if, if you take civil service away, regardless or not you're a veteran? Oh, are you going to just, are you going to bypass a lot of the rights under the civil service rules right now? Are you going to be able to have the ability to just kick somebody right out the door?
No, there's just laws that's in the contract, and there's been case law on that, absolutely no.
But it's going to make it a, it's going to make the whole process a lot easier without the civil service protections, right?
No, because it still goes through, it would still go to an arbitration, which a lot of the disciplinary actions in civil service are now going to arbitration, so it's the same process, and that's all written in the contract, so they still would have the same rights.
Myself too, I'm, I'm a veteran. I also worked in both non-civil service and civil service, and I think it's going to be a big mistake if, if the town gets rid of the civil service, that's all I got to say.
Again, the, the, the just cause is outlined in there, it's in the collective bargaining agreement, the disciplinary determination procedures are all in their, in their collective bargaining agreement. Again, you know, the union's not going to just agree to this and, and give me, give Mike Shaw all, you know, the almighty power to kick people off. It just is, they wouldn't let it fly, and I wouldn't do that, because it's not right. It just is, they wouldn't let it fly, and I wouldn't do that, because it's not right.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 16 as presented, please press 1A. All those opposed, please, please press 2B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. 93 in favor, 35 opposed. The article is passed. Article 17. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a subsufficient for the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices, or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from public building expenses, electricity, police, $292.01 to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices.
We have a motion and a second?
Yeah, the, the amount in the guide has been updated.
Any discussion? A prior year's bill is going to require a nine-tenths vote to approve. We'll open up the voting. All those in favor of Article 17, vote 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. 95% in affirmative, 114 to 6. The motion passes. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to transfer $58,000 from the town hall stabilization fund to the town hall improvement account, or take any action thereof.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
We have a motion and a second to approve the article as read. Mr. Towne Minister?
Are there any questions? This, real brief, we see, we received a lease payment from the solar farm that's on the old landfill on Cutworth Road, that has been designated to go to town hall improvements, so we're taking it from that stabilization fund to the fund that we can actually spend it from. One of the things we will be spending on, on is a match to a grant we received from the state to do a study on town hall, to have an architect look at the most pressing matches that need to be replaced.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put to a vote. All those in favor of Article 18, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. This is, that's correct, thank you, Mr. Kramer, this is a two-thirds requirement to approve. Okay, time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. 116 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative, 97%, the motion passes. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17(c), in the interest of public safety and without further authority. We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of the article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion to dispense passes. Mr. Towne Minister?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Any discussion?
Uh, this will allow the town, the board of selectmen to set the speed limit, reduce it from 30 to 25 miles per hour in the business district for quickly settled areas.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 19? Vote 1A, all those opposed, 2B. Time for voting has expired, we'll post the results. 34 in the affirmative, 39 in the negative, the article is approved. We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Please turn in your wickers, please, on your way out.